Sounds good. You're all ready? I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Boone Township Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate work business. Speaking of clients from Chapter 231, laws of 1975, the notice of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were appropriately posted and made available to the public.
Mrs. Varda.
Here.
Mr. Brainerd.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana. Mr. Chen. Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mrs. Nowicka.
Here.
Also present, Mr. Fratini, Superintendent Principal. We have Mr. Raddely, Morris Representative. Do we have a quorum?
Great, thank you. Please take the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to rearrange our agendas here. Our report was due representative for Mountain Lakes, Mr. Raddely.
Hi, how are you everybody? So today, freshmen had their field trip to Romeo and Juliet. That was really great. We have Christopher Illick was Mountain Lakes 2025, I'm some hero.
To us, you're very well-known in all respect.
We have AP testing coming up soon. Spring break begins tomorrow, so really not a lot of, you know, major updates really since last time now. We're getting to May, it's gonna be very chaotic, so next time I'll have a lot to report. But I just wanted to say definitely we're at this phase in April where really 10 of the year's coming by. I know obviously you're eight days crazy, you're gonna be soon transitioning into high school. I just wanna let everybody know if you guys have any questions regarding that, I can definitely work with Principal No Man, Julie, and Dr. Sable to make sure that everything goes smoothly to the incoming class in Mount Lakes High School. If you guys have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think Grace and I attended your ceremony, congratulations once again from the Morris County School Words Association. With that, we will not be offended if you have other things you need to do. You're welcome to the staff, but we understand.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll take your solidware though.
Yes, that's right.
Do you know any Catholic?
Yep, we committed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And next we have a presentation. We have some board training from Charlene Pearson, our New Jersey School Words Association Senior Field Representative. And begrudgingly, this, I believe, will be our last time that Charlene will be giving us a presentation.
And welcome. I will be, I guess, seeing you guys whoever comes to the Morris County meeting to get your board certification, hoping they'll give you that, but... Yeah, I am really on the countdown now.
Don't look too sad. No.
Well, it does feel a little weird, I'd say.
Celebratory.
So yeah, so this is the last, you guys needed one more training, right, for the certification? So this is the last one. And then also the board needs to complete the board self-evaluation, so that's part of the requirement too. Yeah, so I was saying, they already sent the letter out. I'm like, okay, the letter's a little in advance, but I know they're gonna get it done, so don't worry about it. Ordered your plaque, because that takes a couple of weeks for our malroach to make, so everything is, you know, betting on the condition that we're gonna get all this done.
By when? When? When is that to be done though, again?
Two weeks.
The seventh, sorry.
Okay.
So, and I should say, you know, that the board self-evaluation is completely new, right? And in this new format, it allows the board to evaluate the board goals. So the board self-evaluation is set up so that's similar now to the superintendent's evaluation, where the superintendent had to go in first to put the goals in. This evaluation is set up so that the board president has to log in first. And, you know, either say that you have goals or there's a box of check that says you don't, but either way, the rest of the board, if you tried to log in before the president did, you'll get a error message, so... So just to let you know that. So this is like a more kind of like a conversational training almost, just kind of talking about student achievement and the board's work in this area and how the board can help make a difference. And it's really kind of basis, we changed governance three, and this is the basis of it. Is it, am I just looking on the plus?
The right arrow in your book. The right arrow? On the circle? Go on.
Okay.
Are we too far?
It was just too low, it's up. Okay. So, it's like I said, we're just gonna, you know, so most of the time we'll just be talking, so there's not a lot of slides of information, it's more conversation. So this is kind of really talking about, you know, we always talk about how student achievement is the basis of everything that we do, that what motivates our decisions. So this is essentially saying, okay, that that passion that inspires you to become a board member, you know, sometimes people feel like, you know, and I've heard board say this, like, sometimes it feels like all we do is vote and then go home, right? And that sometimes our agendas are so linear and there's so many things that we have to approve, that you don't always get the time to sit and celebrate student achievement as much as you'd like to, talk about the kids, talk about your goals. So sometimes you really have to make a concerted effort, right, to make that be part of our work. You know, we always say that anyone sitting in the audience, it should be clear to them that the focus of your meeting is based on student achievement. And sometimes a lot of the things we talk about, while it may not seem like we're directly talking about student achievement, it has an impact on it, right? So kind of say, as we start this out then, just kind of wanted to go around and just really kind of talk about your why, kind of like what your why was for running for the board? Or now that you're on the board, like the decisions that you make at the board table and how that is expressed? Like how, how does that come into play when you're making decisions and you're having conversations and so? If you want to keep on a start?
Sure, I mean, I think I ran for the board originally because I wanted to just understand the why, like why things were done the way they were around the school? And also because basically having four kids in this school system K to eight for so long, I just felt like it was my opportunity to get back in a meaningful way.
Yeah, I mean, I'd probably say something similar. You know, I wanted to run for board because, you know, I have three kids in the school, still have two kids in the school. And I saw a lot of kind of the front gates in school, I really wanted to know how it worked, if anything should change, improve. I really liked the, I went to the five-year, two-year planning sessions in front of me, two, I think it was. And I was really kind of excited, because it's a big room full of like parents and, you know, I think there are teachers and, you know, it was really great having everyone talking about the school, maybe what you're doing, how it changed, and that was really exciting. It kind of was to be, and I really kind of wanted to bring that, kind of like, thing spirit to the board. And, you know, I do kind of feel like, feel like a little bit, but I do try to think about that.
Yeah, I had been in this town for several years, my kids had gone to the school we've been before, lived here before they went to the school. And I just wanted to see schools to be the best they could be, not that it wasn't, but, you know, I just felt like I wanted to see how it worked, how can I help? You know, my kids were here and, you know, that also is a motivating factor, it's just about everybody right in the room, had kids go through or have kids go through. So every decision we make, I always say, every negotiation we've been in or every decision, it's like, it should be about the kids, the academics. We brought that up numerous times and I still feel strongly about that in terms of what we do. We do a lot of some bull's blocking and tackling, some of it can be very, you know, it seems like almost boring, but at the end of the day, everything should be about student achievement. So I do think to me that is the most important thing.
I guess I grew up in Boone Township, I went to Rockaway Valley School. After I graduated college, I was volunteering in our community on many different ways, you know, other ways. And once my children came school age, I wanted to learn about what the school board did and also be involved in the school. And I think there was some openings and vacancies, I was interviewed for a position, you know, and appointed at first, and then I was elected thereafter.
And thereafter?
Yeah, a few thereafters. Real, just wanna, you know, do the best I can for our community, you know, and this is another way, you know, since my kids are in school and even though they're in high school and going on, I still wanna continue doing what I can for our community in any way I can. And, you know, I enjoy it. It's all, it is all about the children, you know, and, you know, their success and their achievement.
Similarly to the previous speaker, my why was to become involved in a meaningful way in the educational path of my own children who were at that time. Involved in the school, I know I only have one child in the school. And this is the uniquely American model from the country where I come from, Poland. Parents do not have an option to be so intimately involved in the decision-making that takes place at that level. And, and having that opportunity here, I wanted to seize that opportunity and be involved in the scoring of my own children, involved in the scoring of my own children in a meaningful way. And hopefully contribute some of the ideas and knowledge, talents that we all have in each of these classes.
Yeah, similar to me, so I also went to RVS and wanted, I started in middle school here, so I made a big move from a very large district to a small district and obviously moved back and raising my children here. And I thought, you know, I'm an advocate as my career in social work, and I thought it was really important to be the voice for the voiceless and have equity for all children. And really enhance the academic experience, but also the socio-emotional piece. That's really why I came on board.
So, my youngest is now in college, a freshman in college, so back in the day when they were much, much younger, I had a number of positions on the school association. And I kind of got to the point that I wanted to do something a little bit more directly than students. Similar Barry, there was an open position and I had interviewed for it and was given the opportunity to join the board. I think at that point it was like an eight-month part of the term that was left. And I had enjoyed it, and then when a position opened up on the board, I ran for that position and here I am. I never heard, sorry. That's kind of what led me to this, to being a member of the board.
Good. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to your administrators too, to have you guys tell us your why, why you do this work.
So for me, I chose to go in this direction as superintendent because I feel that, you know, the more people that I can have influence on, particularly kids, the better and the greater the change, you know, in the world. I was very hesitant to leave the classroom, but my mentor told me, he said, if you think you can have a really good impact on 20 kids, imagine a school of 400 and an additional of 4,000. So that really inspired me, but I think about them all the time, this is my new apartment. Thank you.
I've been here about 18 years and in this profession for about 34 years. And I guess when I was in college, I never would have thought that I'd be in education. Started out in the private sector. I'm really a hands-on person, so I enjoy projects that I can start, I can see through and finish that have an impact. And every day is, to me, it's exciting. I can see the kids running through the hallway. What we do in the business office, we keep things running, but we also see the benefit because the kids are there. If it's a building project or, you know, a project to keep the facility running or keeping the staff happy through payroll or anything else, I think that's exciting. But really, to start, to see things start to finish. You know, you can be a major corporation and be a little cog, and you never really see the impact of what you do. But I think when you see, you know, I've had offices in schools, I've had offices in separate buildings, I enjoy being in school because you can see what happens every day. Even when I was at a district that had several schools, I always made it a point to get to every school, to get to know the people. You know, you had populations of over 1,000 faculty and you get to know, you know, each of them and each of the principals and so forth, but I just enjoy it. I've enjoyed it for so long, I wouldn't be here if I didn't enjoy it.
Good.
Do you want to go up to do it?
Yeah. I feel like I'm clicking right where she did, but it's not.
You can give it a go. Perfect.
Okay. So this is then just saying, you know, as much as we talk about student achievement and, you know, recognize that, you know, we know that it has an impact on the work that we do. You know, this, the Iowa Lighthouse Study, which is almost what, like 25 years ago now, was kind of the first study that came out that would made a research-based connection between the work that the board does and the impact that it has on student achievement. So in this study, they studied six board and superintendent teams, and it was from the state of Georgia, even though Iowa was the one conducting this study. And said because Georgia had a more extensive database. So they, the six districts had similar demographics, but three of them were high achieving and three of them were low achieving. So they said, let's see if there's any like similarities between those three high achieving boards or any things that distinguish them between the three boards that were, you know, getting low achieving results. And so the outcome was that the boards in the high achieving districts were just distinctly different in their knowledge and their beliefs, in their actions. So that was kind of then became the basis of the study. And then they did kind of part two of saying, okay, now that we know what these things are, how do we help sustain them or how do we help other boards, you know, start doing those things and understanding those things?
Passing out. Find another one. That's right.
So, so, you know, and it's gonna come down to, so these are pretty much then, those different actions are kind of the goals that the board can follow. You know, has an impact on, and we'll go through one of those, but it starts with setting clear expectations. And that's probably really the basis of all of it, and we'll look at that in just a minute. And kind of creating those conditions for success, how are we helping, you know, student achievement and our students be successful here? Then how do we hold the system accountable? How do we make, you know, bring, you know, when you talked about strategic planning and bringing the community in, like, how do we make this be important to the community as well? And like say, you know, this is their school district, so how do we help them be part of this process? And then saying that we have to commit together to learning together as a board team with your superintendent. So those were, those factors are those things then that were identified as, you know, making a difference in the high achieving boards. So this one kind of really starts with those high expectations and saying that boards in low achieving districts made excuses about why some students or groups of students were not succeeding. And in high achieving districts, the boards had no excuses attitude and said things like poverty, lack of parental involvement. And other factors were described as challenges and not excuses. So kind of thinking about the importance of that attitude, starting at the board table and then how then that would kind of filter or have an impact on the rest of the school. But it has to start here. I mean, I know even one board, it's right in their mission statement that says like, no excuses, like kind of, so just kind of saying like, we are making it clear that we have, this board is saying that every student in this district has the right to be successful. And that that's the message that we want to make sure that we're getting across and important that the board sends that message. So this is just kind of an example in the study that came out of, like, saying, you know, sometimes we don't really think about the impact, right, of our words at the board table, of our actions at the board table, how we're saying things, what we're, you know, accepting. And kind of, you know, so like in some of the examples saying, well, you know, like some board members saying, well, other schools don't have the challenges we face, or some kids just wanna be average with average jobs. You know, from day one, some kids are gonna walk through the door, then there's not much we can do for them. So think about the difference between that attitude and kind of saying that we can't let anything stand in our way, we won't take excuses, everyone has the potential, you know, and what was, there is no status quo. So when you think about that being the difference in the attitude at the board table and with your administration, that makes an impact then throughout the entire district.
It seems to me that the differences between the high and the low groups, if you will, is that the high performing, I'm using the right word, I've already changed this. The high expectations group on the right, they really like reframed whatever challenges there were and just looked at them as like, you know. They're really, they could have had the same issues.
So just kind of, as we, you know, so just as we're sitting here then, so what are some excuses that you've heard about student learning? I know, like, I know I was, like I said, part of this was a little bit of governance three, and so like somebody stood up in the room, I did a workshop this past year, and he's like, I'm so tired of hearing about COVID. You know, and the impact that COVID had, has had on our students, and said, I'm tired of hearing that as an excuse. Like, we get that that happened and we get that that made a difference, but what are we doing about it instead of just blaming it? And so just kind of wondered, as you think about that, like, how can the board have an impact? So I don't know, like, you know, if there's any areas you wanna share that you've heard or like what can the board do in this, to take a stance against that thinking and...
I would say that we've done it with the strategic plan, right? We identified areas of opportunity, brought them, our stakeholders in, as a board collaborated and came up with bullet points where there were needs. And not just academic needs, facility needs, you know, professional development needs, and I think that's kind of, we worked through it all, that our doctrine as a board the last three to four years.
I just hope to get some other mindset. If you, if you have people or board members who have that positive mindset, just like the studies show, then that's gonna move people, it's gonna move teachers. You look at everything like a problem, like, oh, he has a problem reading. Well, no, he doesn't, he has a problem teaching that kid because he has a different learning style. So if you just kind of like change it, change that perspective, a lot of people get on board with it.
Yeah, it was funny, I was thinking when you guys were going around the table and you were talking about your why and, you know, talking about the kids. And like I was working with a board where they couldn't agree, like it wasn't enough to say anywhere, we're doing this for the kids, because they couldn't agree on what was best for kids. So like, one part of the board thought was in the student's best interest, another part of the board thought something else was better. And so like, we finally had to figure out how to come to an agreement of, okay, well, do we all agree that every student has a right to be successful? So instead of even just kind of that blanket of like, well, as long as we do what's right for kids, there are some boards that don't even agree anymore on what that is. So as much as kind of you guys were taking that, I don't wanna say taking it for granted, but you are really all, that really is what motivates you, just recognize that that's not the case everywhere. So in terms of like, you know, taking meaningful actions, and when boards starts discussing the need for improved results, you know, we talked about that mindset, right? It said, it said it can be intimidating to staff, right? So saying kind of like, what's the board doing poking themselves in our business, or am I gonna get in trouble because my, you know, the students are not as successful as we want them to be? So how do you help staff see that we're always hearing, that you're always responsible for this work and that it's a shared challenge rather than an intimidation? So how as a board can you help send that message?
I think it's when Ken said, with the mindset, we don't ever look at, if we, we always want to achieve, I think, as a district to do better. I think every district should wanna do that, right, whether it's test results or seeing growth of children. But we, you know, we just need to make sure that we're focused on that and not looking at it as, oh, what, you know, so and so didn't do well, this cohort didn't do well. The mindset should be, what can we, how can we help, right? What can we, how can we help the administration, how can we help the teachers? I think that's pretty much our job, is how do we set policy and how do we remove obstacles to help, to help everybody achieve.
And welcome feedback from the staff, you know, to see, you know, what they're seeing and try to, you know, use that to help, you know, what can we do, you know, to help, try to help them. Well, that was some kind of work.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the wording though, you know, we've always talked about in board goals, in district goals, the how, the what, the why, all that. So if you look at the top part, the top paragraph, when the board starts discussing the need to improve results, that's sort of the, you know, what needs to get done. But then I'm looking at the second paragraph, what does the board, what can the board do to help staff see? Is that kind of a cross between what the administration is having the direct impact or the direct contact with the staff versus what the board? The board can direct the administration, here's what we need to have happen, go do it.
So I think it comes down to, you know, I think kind of what you're saying about making sure that the staff has the support they need, professional development they need. You know, that when somebody comes to, you know, say an administrator gives you a testing report, that they feel comfortable that the board is not going to challenge them or criticize them and know that, that, you know, when they're coming here, knowing that we're all on the same team. And then we're all working together to help the students. So we're not gonna do the work, we're not gonna tell you what work needs to be done, but we're gonna make sure that you have everything you need to do that work the best that you can, right, to help our students. So the research shows that teacher effectiveness is the single largest factor affecting academic growth. So what can the board do to convey its belief in the power of instruction?
Improve continuing education?
Yeah, I'd say the latest and greatest, right? Standards are always changing. You know, the how, the method that the teachers use. I mean, begin to know, scratch the surface on everything that's changed over the last five, 10 years. So yeah, saying, you know, courage is really important.
So now, how do you celebrate the work of your staff or their accomplishments?
Could I just pay more credit? So we're onto that. I'm finding this question here, a treaty, what can the board do to convey its belief in the power of instruction? So more specifically, like what are some of the actions, words, things of that nature from board members, not only to the staff but to the community about, not only like saying this, that they're only the power of instruction, but the power of an instructor? You know, there's some of these things that people are giving on the board here for all very, very good reasons, but some of the outside people may not know it, you know, like you all have wonderful stories. My children, I went to school here, my children went to school here, they're not even in the school anymore and they're still here because I really believe in the power of the instruction. In this particular building, we believe in the power of these individual teachers. I think that message needs to go out to the community and to the teachers and to the faculty.
So again, if we kind of look at those things then that kind of demonstrate that those high performing boards are kind of how they responded differently. Boards in the high achieving districts believed and could describe the staff development activities to support student learning and the link to district goals. In the low achieving districts, the board members knew there was a budget for PD, it was chosen by the staff, but they weren't sure if there was a plan, and they questioned the value of the expense and the time. So just kind of think about like the difference and the different message that each one of those describes, right, in terms of, you know, the board supporting staff and the professional development. And the board kind of understanding, and I think that goes back to what you just said, with the power of instruction, right? For the board to demonstrate its understanding of the power of instruction, the board would have to be providing that staff the tools that they need, right?
And understand the why, they're important.
So again, the creating... So again, the creating professional development systems that move the needle and achievements is not easy. How, and this kind of was like probably maybe what we've been talking about, but how can a board send a message of learning and value and not just confined to students?
I think the study you just showed, right, is really important. By not saying no, I mean clearly if Mr. Petini or a teacher comes and believes that they, that this is something worth undertaking, we should listen to them and probably support them. Rather than, question.
Isn't board going through a process right now getting a certain license?
I mean, just think of these things.
That's a better answer.
Sorry.
Okay, that's a better answer.
The faculty may not know this, the community may not know this. Even if you haven't received that certification, just get the knowledge that you go through this, this process to become better, the, to be a learning community of board members, that says a lot.
And just showing that we're continuous learners as well, you know, and sharing what we learn. In the light city, you know, it's just like that we're investing our time and energy into the school because we value what we're learning and that, and we value our teachers. And I think one effort we made, I guess it was maybe two or three years ago when we started reporting out on committees. And I think that really shows the community as well of what we're doing behind the scenes and transparency and, you know, how we can support admin as well when we're hearing from, you know, different areas of opportunity in those different groups. And actually, something we've discussed, but we haven't put it on the agenda yet, was in governance was to have an opportunity or space on the agenda for then the...
Governance committee?
Yeah, or the, um, the teachers to speak if they'd like to. At Mountain Lakes, they, like, every once in a while, they get up just sometimes just to say nice things. Sometimes it's slightly more confrontational, but just, just to let the board know what's going on. But most of the time, they're celebrating each other, you know, and celebrating retirement. And they come up and speak on behalf of their colleagues about their retirement. So it's just, it's a lovely place to share goodwill and message. Maybe something you want to consider putting in.
Well, even in one of the board's, Unity Charter's, well, like, they started out their meeting with good news and sharing. And so then the board, you know, like, or in acknowledgement. So that way the board, any of the board members want to acknowledge staff or accomplishments or even other board members and just kind of like, how do we start this out on a positive kind of note, right?
I think it has to have, and this is what Chris talked about for a minute last month. Like a student, I know we have been on Lake students and there's another township student could certainly give a quick report about what's going on with the student body. I mean, we wouldn't be asking questions of the student, but they would certainly interface, be get.
That Mandham Township does, that they have an eighth grader.
I think that would be kind of a similar idea, would be great, right? Read to kind of hear from a student.
Or rotating eighth grade labs so everyone gets to share.
Yeah.
I mean, the eighth grade officers would be.
Right. But it would be, I think it'd be really interesting. I think also would show students that we're here, we do, and parents as well.
Okay, so this just kind of talks about some of the things that the board can do to demonstrate its commitment to professional development, saying by, through policy, sending a clear message that it's a priority, making sure you're providing your staff the time and the resources, be willing to bring in the help your staff needs, review and discuss progress regularly, keep the focus on the bottom line, student learning, and be visible in helping parents and community members understand. And I think that goes back to what we talked about before of, you know, making it the fact known outside of kind of these four walls here, right? Of the great things that are happening and the value that the board places on the staff and student learning. So then, kind of one of the other areas then talked about, setting clear and focused goals. You know, so we know that we have the goal setting process that we do every year and we know that, you know, starting from a strategic plan, that that's the basis. But just kind of saying that, you know, again, in the Lighthouse study, they found that some districts either had very few things or had too many. So in either case, they weren't really, you know, putting the level of focus that was needed and kind of saying that they didn't have clarity about what the main student needs were. You know, and finding one of the superintendent in Montclair used to say, like, "Generally, the main thing's got to stay the main thing." And, you know, so it's kind of a simple thing, but it's really kind of like the bottom line, right? That, because we sometimes find ourselves getting pulled in so many different directions that you have to keep remembering, keep the main thing, the main thing, right? And so just kind of, you know, and this says you can't do everything at once. So make sure that you, you know, that those things that you're setting as goals are those, what those priorities are to help you accomplish what you need to accomplish.
At work, we have a saying, "If you have more than three or four priorities, you have none."
Okay.
So otherwise, this is, everything can't be a priority, you need to focus and narrow it.
Well, that's true, yeah. So this was one of the examples in the study. This is kind of an extreme example, but it's more just to set a point. So it says there was a North Carolina school district that knew they had to narrow their focus. So they went from multiple goals to one tightly focused goal. It was a long-term goal. They said in the next five years, a certain percentage of their students tested would score at or above grade level in reading and math, and they would be benchmarked at grades three and eight. So after the five years, it said they did not accomplish their goal, but they did see a large increase. So it said, okay, they knew it was a stretch goal, but not impossible. So that single goal made it clear to everyone and galvanized that the school system, community, so that everyone was railing around it. They made sure that's how they aligned their resources, had to make any adaptations, any funding increases, you know, that that was where the priority was. And then brought the community into the work. So kind of as we think about our goals and, you know, like you said, narrowing it down to like three or four, so what are those things then that, you know, are that important? And at the end of the day, it kind of comes down to balance, right? So saying, so what can the board do? And a lot of times, there's, because there's, you know, so many competing priorities. If, you know, people want you to move in different directions. So what can the board do to ensure there's a strong commitment to the focused goals without losing sight of accountability in other areas? What do you guys think?
One of the things that we had talked about was in our, in our committee meetings to kind of go back to the goals and revisit them in our committee to make sure that like we're working towards that in our committee.
That's a great idea.
But not like people need to do the same thing. They have their long-range plan. And each committee, which I think is something we could look at doing, making sure how does it tie back to the long-range plan? So each time you meet, the decisions we're making, how do they impact that? So it's very similar.
Yeah.
We had some similar conversations across committee with some goals, some of those committees, I think it was policy, or, you know, curriculum program that we were going to be reviewing in the cycle. Yeah, like our own little goals that we were discussing.
Good, okay. So this kind of talking about data and kind of looking at it as kind of the story that it tells, right? Or kind of the picture it paints. And said that one of the board members said that when they look at data and if it showed that one in four students, they was not reading at grade levels. And I picture my daughter's fourth grade class and like wondering which one of those four, you know, who are those, those kids that need our help? So kind of then as you look at that kind of thing, what are some ways that your board puts a face around? You know, how do you look at data to kind of think about it more than just numbers, but to think about it as students?
I think because we are such a small district and our kids have all gone through the whole grades. It's like, it's almost impossible to look at a grade level score and not like know who the teachers are and know what it feels like to have the kids in that class. You know, it's very, you know, I don't know. So it's kind of, I feel like the face just there, it's like you know, we all know each other and teachers become like family, you know? So it's just, it's meaningful when you see that data and you see like.
You can say so and so's brother or sister is in that class.
Yeah.
Family.
Very real. Yeah, it's not like, it's not some other school or my kid didn't go to that school and I don't know those teachers, you know, it's very personal.
Definitely visualize each, you know, each grade in class, you know, especially when you have children going here. You know, you can picture all the kids in each grade.
I think we look at the NJAS results and sometimes we see cohorts that aren't performing. And you can visualize that that's not fun. We realize what can we do, right, around the child? So you kind of picture, okay, what is this group? How do we help this group? But you're not just having, putting a literal face to it, but you know, what does this group look like and why do they need help?
And this one kind of talks about making sure that we kind of, you know, kind of take this approach of like a methodical approach, right? And then it, you know, kind of builds off of the flywheel concept in good degree of saying that there's just not one wonderful thing that's going to happen. There's just not one magic bullet that it is kind of taking the process and just keep doing the work, keep pushing the wheel, right? Building momentum until you finally start seeing those results that you were hoping to see and just, you know, kind of not give up on, on the work. Instead of thinking that, well, if we only do this program, it's going to raise our scores. Or if we only do this, right? Instead of thinking that it needs to be a, you know, a concerted effort that builds over time. So I think that's why like when, you know, when they showed that one goal and they were measuring it over a five-year period, right? Because you kind of need that much time, that much work to go into it to be able to see those types of results and movements. So here's a couple of examples of like, from the study of how boards like kind of kept their focus. And said there was a board that turned down a technology grant when it realized it would take up to 50% of the staff's PD time and dilute the focus on the commitment to improving reading. So think about like what a big step that would be, right? To turn away some money, but if it is stopping from doing that, that main thing, then kind of recognizing that that is how that board kind of demonstrated, right? That they kept that priority. And then here's an example of, you know, saying if you've got some initiative that's going, you don't really realize as new board members and new staff members are coming into the fold that they need to kind of have that same excitement and that same understanding as people that were there, right, when you, you kicked it off. So again, how do you make sure then that you're providing everyone the support that they need to help carry it forward and make sure that they have that same focus? And then just kind of the importance of celebrating successes, right? I thought this was a good quote that says, "Praise what you want to raise," right? That just kind of a way to, to just look at it and saying, you know, sometimes we, you know, that there's short-term wins that maybe we should be acknowledging that sometimes we don't always do, right? And saying instead of formal recognitions at board members, they could back out, "How else can we express?" And sometimes it's just the language we use, right? The shout-outs that we give, it's just, you know, can be all kinds of ways that we can demonstrate that. And you know what? Also celebrate your own work. Like, it would just sound like after the board, you know, gets its certification and, you know, there should be some acknowledgement of that, right? So just kind of in summary, saying these are some of the habits then that emerged to boards as a result of the research. And saying to designate a time on the agenda to talk about progress on key district initiatives, to learn about supports for quality professional development, to, you know, to get a better understanding of that. I mean, I even had some board say like, if, like if the board approves the staff to go somewhere, that the staff then come back to a board meeting and tells the board, "Okay, kind of this is what we got out of this and this is what we need in that professional development that you've provided for us." So just kind of as a way to kind of keep everybody, you know, so that you are working together, that the staff is, you know, coming back to explain to the board how that helped make a difference. The next one, you know, talked about a strong commitment to our district goals, knowing that, you know, learning data should be an ongoing conversation, right? Not just that once a year. And kind of again, that, that belief that the board shows and the ability of the staff to achieve their goals and to provide the support that the staff needs. So this is just kind of a summary then of those five things that we looked at of saying, you know, you get what you expect, so make sure you act on the belief that all children can learn. Focus on what matters most, teaching causes learning, so aim for instruction. Can't do everything at once, so jumpstart success with clear measurable focused goals. What gets measured gets done, so use data to drive improvement. And you can't leave what you don't have, so lead as a learning team. I think that was the last one, right?
Yes. Yeah, what do you have?
Boyfriend.
We have the pass at Christmas.
So I don't know if anyone has any questions or any thoughts about like, anything we talked about?
Do you have any, I wish more people, you know, anybody else about that? Yeah, it'd be a great way to have just people know. There's not many people here today, I don't know, is there any way you recommend getting?
Start some fires, you know?
I know, they come for the best.
That's a good point.
Made up some lies.
Is there anything you recommend to, or value in kind of getting people more engaged in our meeting process?
I think, you know, that you pretty much hit the nail on the head, right? That there's just, that it's not going to come. So rather than trying to figure out how you're going to get them here, figure out how you can get the information to them if they're not going to come to you. So, you know, kind of, you know, they say like, some boards will say, "Oh, nobody's here, so the community must be happy and we're doing things great." Well, saying like, don't rest on that or don't assume that. Like, don't let that stop your responsibility to make sure that the community knows what you're doing. And, you know, so kind of saying, how do we meet them where they are instead of making them come to where we are, right? So that's, and, you know, I had talked to one lady who's a PR person. She's the PR person in Montville. And she was telling me just, you know, again, I hate to go back to COVID as an excuse, but she said from a PR standpoint, it's really changed. Parents coming to things and community showing up at things. And it's almost like a new reality too for her job, right? Of how to, to get the word out and how to get other people engaged in this work, so.
I think, I mean, I could do a better job or maybe, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but like, there is like board notes that went out, like on Facebook or, you know, just like things.
We got Facebook page, we could do it on the web. Updates or like a board newsletter, it'd be pretty dry, but I can.
Highlights on the media or like board highlights.
I think that's why.
Punch it up. I don't know, just kind of talking to ourselves sometimes, which is fine. But if you look to hear or understand, we will pick it up.
Like a quarterly, you know, update?
Yeah.
Or update on the goals, strategic goals, like once a year or twice a year. And, and update, like I'm looking at our board goals and we pretty much hit like four of the six.
And that's one board that even just kind of like had a calendar on it. And under each month, like it talked about what it did that. So then people then, once you see it up there for the whole year, you can kind of see all the things that the board accomplished for the year.
Any other questions for Shirley?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your guidance over the years.
Yes.
It's our true pleasure. And thank you. We're actually leaving in the morning for the Sunday's to there yet.
Oh, I see that.
Our kids have not seen the house yet, so that's why we're going to call them like that. It is in South Fork, so it's kind of like in between Wilmington and Marlin.
We might see you in a couple of years.
See you wandering down the beach.
But as Chris said, thank you for all your many years of guidance and help and support to our board and I, I say it all the time, but to my perspective.
We've gone through a lot of, uh, exciting times.
I, I don't know, you know, I don't know, like you've, you've just done an amazing job over the many years, no matter when, when calls you, you know, you work five, you know, five days and nights a week and weekends. I don't know when, you know, when you have time off, but you know, you're, you're always there and you're there for multiple districts. So I, so I'm always amazed at how you, you know, do your job and you do a great, great job doing it. So, but so thank you for all your many years of help and support. I know it's, you know, it's been invaluable, you know, valuable, invaluable to me, you know, but we're gonna miss you.
Thank you so much and I look forward to giving the board your board certification award and.
What day is that? Day seven.
Thank you so much, everyone. Really has had an amazing experience working with you guys, so thank you.
Can you be husband?
Okay, you can do that, yep. Okay. Good night, everyone.
See you later.
It's been, it's been.
You know, you not only help out with the work, but you come to our group, you're active with our group. And it's appreciated. Well, we missed it.
We missed it.
Oh, you did. We'll come, you come back for a maybe.
Thank you.
It is.
We are, we are under Board Business. That may we have a motion for Board Business, motion one through five.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any questions, comments or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Board Business motions, one through five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any suspensions? And that brings us to administrative report, starting with the business administrator, Board Secretary, Mr. Murray.
Okay, just a couple of items and this is my excitement to be here every day. So the twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tentative budget, remember the board had approved it, um, submitted to the county on March eighteenth. Still waiting for approval to advertise the budget, um, for the, uh, the public, uh, to get it to the paper. The deadline for all county offices to approve district budgets statewide is April twenty-first. So copy our advertised budget, need to get to the paper today to meet our statutory deadline to get it advertised. So we're still waiting for approval. And what I do is I need to get approval back, I need to get the cost of it. So we, we need to get that ball rolling. So we'll still get the approval. We had to put things in place, that's why there's some discussion of moving a meeting, but there's statutory deadlines we need along the way. So the public hearing as a reminder is on, uh, scheduled for April thirtieth. Cafeteria replacement, we talked about that months ago. They're scheduled for Monday, the twenty-first to replace all the in-wall units. Um, and, and not a moment too soon because they're really at the end of life. So that'll be a one or two day project, so hopefully during spring break, they can get it all done and be ready to go for the students when they come back. Financial disclosure statements, thank you to everybody for getting those in. I certified the, the final, uh, uh, reports and sent it all to Ethics Commission and we are now in compliance with all the firing, filing requirements. Uh, an update on the heating system, uh, we're replacing a number of valves, uh, that are involved with HVAC and the boiler. They'll be here next week to replace some valves, have to drain the entire system out, replace some valves and, uh, you know, fire the system back up again. So at least we have a week to test to make sure there are no leaks and we'll be ready to go in case we get any, uh, cool weather when the children come back. Uh, and the New Jersey School Board Conference, uh, you remember there were a number that attended last year. The Workshop Twenty Twenty-Five will be Monday, October twentieth through Thursday, October twenty-third. Uh, anybody interested, let me know. And, uh, what I will do is like we did last year, worked out very well, is we register as a, as a district, we're allowed to do that for a group rate. So three or four of you go, decide to go in person, um, the whole board has access to all the documents after the conference is over. So please let me know, the, uh, uh, the first day that the, uh, hotels and everything opened up, they sold out a couple of hotel that were booked. What's happening is they are, um, giving fewer and fewer hotel rooms allotted or blocks to schools. So let me know, I'll get, you know.
Sorry, did they open already?
Yeah, they opened and.
And they already?
I already, I already put in, you know, booked it for, you know, all the board, at least a place card holder. So let me know and then I can, I actually, you know, pay for and book the rooms.
Yeah.
All right, so October twentieth through the twenty-third. Uh, unfortunately, I won't be there this year because I have another conference that's, that's conflicting, but as I said, I register, I'll register the whole board once we get on the, uh, the May agenda, we'll have it to approve, you know, all board members. And then just tell me as far as who wants to go and I can do the hotel, or I'm also gonna do the hotel. Uh, that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the superintendent's report, Mr. Patini.
Thank you. Engineering with empathy is the focus on the eighth grade STEM curriculum. Mrs. Farback and the eighth graders partnered with ENABL, Enable NorCal, a California-based high school robotics team to create and assemble five custom 3D printed prosthetic arms for recipients in Uganda. The collaborative project focused on building Ripper Kowu prosthetic arms for individuals living with limb differences due to congenital conditions, workplace accidents, and unfortunately combat-related injuries. The devices will soon be shipped to Uganda where they will be life-changing tools for the recipients. Enable NorCal, a team affiliated with the global enablement future network, coordinates the project by designing the prosthetic arms using advanced CAD computer-aided design software. The designs were then shared with Rockaway Valley School students who assembled the prosthetics and oversaw quality control, ensuring that the devices were live, were reliable, durable, and ready for real-world use. The goal of this project was more than learning how to assemble a 3D-printed prosthetic. It was an opportunity to make a real difference in the lives of the recipients. The project was also a valuable hands-on experience, giving students practical exposure to engineering, design thinking, and humanitarian outreach. The students also saw that youths are capable of making a meaningful impact. The members of Enable NorCal are high school students. And just to let you know also, we had our visiting professor from Monmouth State, Dr. Bridget Luning, who's also an author, she teaches STEM and has written her dissertation and a book on STEM. Thank you.
That's fabulous.
Very tight. Big props to Mrs. Farback.
Thank you very much. But so you've all had, you've all had a chance to look at the university's report, the student intense report, the state intense report. That brings us to combinations, Mr. Patini.
Thank you. I'd like to give a huge round of applause for our busy visual and performing arts department for, one, the Music in Our Schools Month in March concert for featuring pre-K and second grade, the lower grade spring concert with third through fifth grade, the upper grade spring concert for a select chorus and upper grade band, and the amazing art show featuring every student. Mrs. Portella, Mrs. Kovar, Mrs. Plusko, you and your students really made us proud. One more standing ovation for the cast, crew, and creative staff of last month's triumph, Beauty and the Beast. Particular shout-outs to the tiresome efforts of the following adults who lent their expertise and patiently shared all they know with our budding performers, the set, lighting designers, and more. Larry DeRosa, Harry Patrick Christian, Beth Johnson, Alison Lookin, John Gardner, Heather Toto. And massive thanks to the Ed Foundation for their financial support and organization. Thank you to the Home and School Association and Mrs. Cooper for arranging the Jordan Songbook Author Day for grades five through eight. Its presentations are fascinating and the eighth grade workshop was inspiring. As you all know, we're moving away from just strictly having assemblies, we're having workshops so that kids have some real tangible experience and firsthand, uh, workshops with the authors. Next, kudos to Mrs. Paradi and all the staff members for the wonderful literacy night, um, last week. Many stations for KPI for students were available for families to explore. And on to spotlight on student work for March. Congratulations to, in kindergarten, Dylan Casper, Karen Ramek, Sammy Anakin, Maddox McKinter, Jack Bevo, and Jenna Voloshin. First grade, Valentina Burrow and Riley Winters. Second grade, Ilani Lung, Khaled Bardak Sarn, Daphne Lettakowski. And third grade, Daniel Zuniga, Julia Ram, and Alexandra Zunovsky. On to fourth grade, flying high in fourth. This certificate is awarded each month to recognized students who display a variety of outstanding character and/or achievements within the classroom. Fourth graders John O'Leary and Victoria Giffens, Nolan Bardak Swern, Finn Renviv and Kayla Mull, Lily Landau and Asher Mathau. And Falcons of the Month for January, congratulations go to, in fifth grade, Alexandra Perez Bosson, sixth grade, Kendall Mall, seventh grade, Michael Manella, and eighth grade, Gia Ladona. Falcons of the Month are students that exhibit a dedication to learning, leadership skills, great attitude, strong character traits, who promote a positive school climate. And that concludes the commendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to correspondence, which you've also had a chance to read, one through four. That brings us to open session number one. The first public comment period will limit to adjunct items only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved if the appropriate staff members or administration, administrators, according to the Chan Fung Man concept. Questions may be directed to appropriate school personnel or board via email. Please state your name and address for the record and all comments will run to you in five minutes. There do not appear to be anyone here to address them for this time. And that means we'll move on to our liaison reports, starting with the Mountain Lake Board of Education.
All right, so we've had two meetings since, so bear with me on the first one. It's been a while since we had that meeting, I'll have to go over my notes here. We, there was a lot of student recognitions, it was a great, um, ceremony for all the winter sports and activities that went there. So, um, they, they talked about Lake Drive, the DEP Academic Bowl, I think they went to the quarterfinals. Uh, there were winter sports recognitions, I won't list them all because I may, may have missed some from off, I don't know if I got them all, but there was, uh, some really great accomplishments by, by some of the folks in the winter sports. The visual performing arts recognition, I think they had some folks that went to the NJSMA Region One Orchestra, three students, um, from the symphonic band, wind ensemble. Uh, they had, uh, seventh graders created artwork for, uh, the academic planner for Briar Clips, that's actually on the cover, which is kind of cool, it went out. Um, they, they won that award. And I guess our own Michael Sarah, uh, who's a, uh, RBS alum, won an award for Best Photo Show with color and contrast through a photo contest, which just kind of has some beautiful photos they showed him, um, slideshow. Um, and there was a photo robe award winner, Supreme Per. Um, the big thing that happened in that meeting was they went over the turf presentation, if you haven't heard, they wanted to turf, um, a pit. They got a $1.2 million grant from the state to do so. Uh, there were just some concerns from certain people that live around there about will you put lights, will it host, um, you know, uh, larger events, you know, like, uh, I'll call it varsity type sports? And the answer is no, it's more of a practice facility. They will hold games, but they'll be small games, but like JV and, um, freshmen, so nothing different than probably what happens today, except they actually think it will improve the drainage because a turf field drained down instead of draining out. So some of the, they had issues in the past with water running into the folks that lived behind the pit. Lot of discussion in the pit. Uh, we must've spent over an hour with people for it, against it, and most people were for it. Uh, so it was a pretty good discussion and I think the board did a really good job of explaining how they got the grant, the timeline. And the big issue was the town had to be signed over, uh, half of the land. The school district owned half of the pit and it's affectionately known as the pit, by the way. And then the, um, the town owned the other half, so the town had to sign over the other half and they had to find a title. They lost the title, it had changed hands thirty-seven times. They had no idea who, where it actually was. They finally found it last night, I don't know the outcome of it, but they were supposedly finally gonna sign over the town, the land to, um, the district. Turns out the little snack shack that's at the high school, school didn't own it, it was actually on land owned by the town. So it was very interesting. Yeah, so they now own that whole, the school now owns that whole parcel of land going up through the pit and down through the snack shack or whatever. So that was most of what they talked about. And then they went through the tentative budget, everybody cleared out, out of the perk, to try on the pit discussion, so it was just our board discussing the tentative budget. They had healthcare increases of $660,000. Um, they're actually gonna increase their tax levy to 2.5%, but they had a reduction of debt services of 5%, so kind of somewhat, uh, evens out. Their total budget, if, after all the special revenues that they have, and their tax levy is 46.3 million, which is up from $43 million in 2025. And I do have a note, um, when we went through it, Dr. Seagull was very appreciative of the collaboration on the calendar. He said, we have to prove the calendar. Um, and they, new policies, an interesting policy on spectator behavior, three strikes and you're out, can't come to Mountain Lake Sports anymore. So I think, you know, overall, there's issues, not just in Mountain Lakes, but everywhere with parents sort of being a little too vocal, so they, they put in more policy into that. And then we, we gave an upgrade, an update on the long-range facilities committee, I'm on it, Ms. Hermy was on it before. So they're looking at, that, that long-range plan is about 2027, so about a year and a half-ish from being done. So they're starting to think about what's the next thing so that they can have that ready. And then I don't know what happened, but all my notes from last night are gone. So, uh, last night we talked about, Charlene Peterson came and did a presentation, so I saw her, I was actually on Monday night, two times. She did an update on the superintendent evaluation process, so we went through that. I'm trying to remember, we had, um, oh, an update from, uh, Mr. Reese on the, um, new, I think it was LA program that they're implementing on grades three through five. They finally chose a new program, uh, they're gonna have new textbooks, a whole new curriculum around, uh, you know, LA, um, in that space. So that was very informative. Um, and they, they talked about the rankings, I guess the new NJ.com, I think it was, had the rankings of the high schools in Mountain Lakes came up, according to that, number one, high public high schools. I don't know if it was public or all, because I have, I don't have the subscription to NJ.com, so I couldn't get to the article, but, uh, we were told they were, they were ranked number one. When they looked at all the criteria that they put on the board, um, they did very well. They, they decreased their chronic absenteeism, which was great. So they have obviously more people attending full-time. And their, the academics did come out very well, um, across the board, both on, um, great younger grades up, they, they saw that they were basically, as they passed through the different grades, they're really, um, they're making great strides. Uh, they're, they're, I don't know, I forget the word that they use, but they're, they're seeing the progression of the children there. And then the SAT scores were excellent, um, that came back across the board. So it's all positive news as far as the academics go. That's, that's from memory, so hopefully. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Just.
Yeah, sure.
And we, the whole board. If there's a new three through five literacy program, we coordinating with that and you should be doing discussions with Mountain Lakes about it.
I don't know, it's first I had heard about it because I only hear about the high school stuff and I'm not on the program committee, so they, they had the committee read out and they went through it. So we can talk about it, I think it's, um, I, I think they've been discussing it, I remember I watched some old videos before I joined the board and you might remember there was one, they had people come up that, I don't know what the program was with the old administration they were looking at, people weren't happy with that, so they spent a lot of time going through it. So I'll have to, you know, for, we don't discuss it now, but maybe we could discuss them this afternoon. If there's a connection, if they changed their LA program. I think it's just more the vendor they go with and materials, I, I don't know if it's a huge shift, complete shift in curriculum, is my understanding, how I interpret, if that makes sense.
We've had some conversations, but I'll have to double check on that.
Okay. I didn't get the sense that they were completely revamping the whole program.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to New Jersey School Boards Association.
My shorter report and nothing to add, Mr. Murray, but Murray, I mean, I'm gonna make a comment.
Sorry, I'm still used to that.
No, I have that.
Thank you, thank you. And that brings us to Morse County School Boards Association.
So Morse County School Boards on April second, Piper Wolf's was awarded our unsung hero award from our district. Patini was there. Tini was there, Barry and I were there. So that happened on the 2nd. The next meeting is on Wednesday, May 7th. This is at Mount Olive High School. This is their end-of-year awards and recognition. As we've discussed tonight, we're going to be awarded, the board will be awarded awards, so it'd be great if everyone can make an effort to be there. And then of course, Charlene.
What time?
On six, right?
Six to 8:30. Now usually the first 45 minutes of dinner, typically.
And unfortunately, since it's about all planned for sinkhole traffic.
Yeah.
To get out and to get there, take that into consideration. There's no easy way. Let's see, that brings us to the Educational Services Commission, Morris County. I attended the meeting last Wednesday night. Routine business was carried on, nothing, nothing, yeah, out of the ordinary to report. And that brings us to the Tenth of Special Education Parent Advisory Group.
All right. On March 26th, Mrs. Preier and Mrs. Hayes delivered an engaging and informative presentation on speech and language development during the early childhood, childhood years. The session was very well received, and to an audience of over 15 attendees, reflecting a lot of interest and community involvement. CPAC's annual survey has been circulating and is now nearing its close. In the coming weeks, CPAC will meet with the school administration, review the results, and be planning, planning next year.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Boot and Township Education Foundation.
That's Jeff.
Jeff, oh, Jeff, okay. Jeff is not here, does anyone else have any insights?
There's a trivia night coming up with the Ed Foundation, I believe that's May 17th, which just went out. Trying to think what else are they doing during recovery, moving on to the play. Four kids start soon, I think registering after spring break.
I think they sponsored Trupps as well.
That's right. So the Trupps in the 50th grade.
Got it. So HSA.
Yes, next is the River Valley Public School Association.
Yeah, so the big thing that's coming up with the HSA is the Harlem Wizards, Mount Lakes High School, April 30th, 5:30, if there's still tickets available. It's going to be fun. And then the large fundraiser, which is the Fun Run. I'm quoting entirely on that. All of the fundraising activity links have gone off this week, and the goal is to pull the walkway around the playground. Pull the walking track. That news to you? Oh, okay. That's one good, one to set us off for fundraising.
That was an idea. A lot of many ideas.
Did they broadcast that?
It's out there. On the flyer, on the internet. One of the fundraising ideas.
Where are they talking about? Where, you said around the playground, they got that?
It says, walking path around our school.
But let's just preface it as a proposed idea.
A proposed idea.
We just want to raise money to help the school, has that? That's all I'm going to have to report.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Tenth of Boot and, that's usually, I'm aware, but I think, I do know they had their budget hearing yesterday, yes, last evening, and I heard it was well attended. That's all I know about that. Boot and Township meeting.
Okay. So we had our regular meeting on April 4th, and there's been quite a lot of activity, actually, going on. I had attended the work meeting, just to talk to the committee, the town committee, about like all the things that the green team's been doing with the water developing, the water story, and we have a grain fair coming up on June 4th. And, and we bumped into the DPW, Rob Russo, and he shared that over at Leonard Park, there is, you guys might have seen that on Facebook, because there's some chatter, but there are beautiful dappledals, that like, that whole area was like covered in invasive leaf, mudwork. Anyway, long story short, is we dug, we dug up some of those and planted a few of them around the school with some Girl Scouts, so it's kind of like a nice way to like be home and some of that. But that also impacted, there's a rain garden over there that is meant to catch water and runoff and salts and stuff like that from the road and oil and stuff, so we're working on that. And yeah, we're starting to work on the garden now as well. The Girl Scouts also helped get so much seed, so that was kind of fun. Yeah, including your daughter, right? She had a good time? She did? Okay. Let's see. So the next, our next meeting is, oh, May 2nd, but more importantly, we have community cleanups, street cleanups, led by Alicia. She's, and, or organized, as she said. And so we'll be out there, I'll be out there with you, picking the garbage up off the street. And we're trying to rope in as many high school volunteers as we can, you know.
When is that?
Saturday, May 3rd and May 17th. And also, on behalf of the towns news, the, the, the correct department does the river cleanup on April 2nd. That's, I'm on the way. And you can shred Saturday at the week, right? If you have cleaning up. There you go. It's Saturday.
That would have been, that would have, I know that would have been in the township report. Great, so we put it together, thank, thank you. And with that, we have Facilities Transportation, the committee did meet recently.
Yes, we have a meeting on April 4th. And this was to kind of realign on potential referendum next steps. Discussed what happened, what might happen in the future, and there'll be more discussion to come, but right now, I'm kind of revisiting the whole referendum.
Thank you. And that brings us to plans. I don't believe the plans committee that recently, but we did have plans, motions one through 15. May I have any motion, please?
Up and.
Is there a second? One second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, questions on the adoption of plans, motions one through 15, that's a roll call. Mrs. Florida?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Mill?
Yes.
Mrs. Noicka?
Yes.
Don't compare. Thank you. That brings us to Personnel, the Personnel Committee that recently has held a meeting.
Two weeks ago.
Yes.
And the main things that are on the agenda tonight are Mrs. Preority's maternity leave and Mrs. Ryder's retirement is primarily what we discussed.
Thank you. And with that, we have the motion for personnel motions, one through seven.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Better lie to someone.
Just comment that, well, Mrs. Reader, Reader, right?
Yes, right.
But she's been amazing, and, and, so we, you know, just run up a beautiful program.
My, my son, who is a junior in high school, in the preschool program, and also, they worked from way back then, so.
That was amazing.
Great.
So thank you, and good luck to her.
Yes, thank you. Questions, comments, or discussion? Does it have a motion in the second? Would you keep me honest? Good. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of personal motions, one through seven, that's a roll call. Mrs. Florida?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Mill?
Yes.
Mrs. Noicka?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to Program.
Yeah, I remember you took notes in.
I graciously offered.
You graciously offered to the episode.
I did.
Met on Monday, Tuesday, very recent, very, can't remember the date, Tuesday morning, was with, with Miss Worgeroff. I discussed a couple of topics, an update on a few sessions. We recently had Michelle Lockwood from Coalition, from this education, being discussing staff applying for various grants, and some professional development training on top of Charlene's presentation about human education resources. Was being with a STEM author from Montclair State, I don't have the person's name, but we met with, about STEM education. Samantha Nengro from the Morris County Prosecutor Office, met with the six, eighth graders, discussing perfect use technology and social media and texting. We discussed the upcoming NJSLAs on May, concerning May 12th, that's all week. And how the benchmark testing is going. There's some discussion of possibly changing benchmark testing vendors, we can discuss briefly. Kindergarten orientation is on May 6th. There was a discussion of possibly having a climate or culture survey for our upper grade students. If he was an intern, he was, discussed, came and discussed the SOAR program, some changes in testing evaluating if his students, including students given social emotional intelligence. And we discussed further anticipated changes to the upper grade math programs.
Can I ask you what he said about kindergarten?
Kindergarten orientation.
Orientation.
Apologies.
Are you going to write this down?
Uh, you know. I could do it.
I could have just recorded what he said, and then chat completed like, and hear me out.
Fortunately, it was recorded.
It's all in the, it's recorded somewhere. It's a good point.
Yeah, that was a great point.
Thank you. Just do voice to text.
Yeah.
You can watch it tomorrow, the day after.
Exactly.
And with that, we have program motion number one, may I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Mr. Murray, call that tie on the second. Mrs. Florida? Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of program motion number one, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who puts a no? Any extensions? That brings us to Policy. Committee has not met recently, but we are attempting, we are scheduling a meeting soon. I believe all these policies were first reading and described at that prior meeting.
Yeah.
So, so with that, we have policy motion number one, may I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? And if not, the questions on the adoption of policy motion number one, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who puts a no? Any extensions? We have governance, we need to have a meeting, whoever's on the governance committee, after the meeting, let us clear calendars together and schedule a meeting.
Sounds good.
And with that, open session number two. I'm not going to read the statement, because there's nothing public.
Seeing none.
Seeing none in the public, we're going to move on to old business. Is there any old business that comes before the board? Is there any new business that comes before the board?
I had something I wanted to bring up. I talked about this in program a little bit, it's just goals. And I really weren't able to make it, but I'd like to see if you can get the goals set up earlier and establish before June, possible for next year. And the reason being, I think it'll give the administration some time, being new, to like catch their breath after this year, and then have the summer to plan for the goals, instead of setting them in like July or, you know, August. So maybe if we, I don't know if it's next meeting, I know we have, the next meeting is the. The 14th, but it's the, it's the budget meeting, right? Or, oh, that's the fault, like, so we could discuss it at the next meeting, if we want to come up with some ideas, and then, you know, put something together, maybe vote, you know, whatever it is, May or June. The idea would be just give the administration some runway to get stuff done after, you know, I'll call it a wonderful but chaotic start, as it was, you know, when Ken was coming in fresh in September, and like the school year was already all running. Yeah. That's my thought, if we can just give them some time.
I, I, it's a little tentative at that point, but I'm, can we just clarify what we have to do in the next few months? Because we have to do, um, now we're superintendent.
I have, I have my other, we have a board self-evaluation and a superintendent evaluation.
And, and you're just, we're just thinking about what comes first, or part of that can work with gold, maybe that's not what I wish.
I don't think the evaluation has anything to do with next year's goals, no.
It's just something we have to do, I guess.
The other way, Ken, on the goals from current.
Yep.
And we do our self-evaluation from current. And we should also be saying.
And reflect, and from that, we could set the goals.
Yeah, and I'm saying, really, just, just, however we, I'm working backwards from June, is what, however we want to do it, stack it and sequence it. But really, I just thought if they had, you know, July and August, the whole administration can kind of sit down, okay, this is what we're focused on now, rather than if we get delayed and we wait too long, it could be July, and then all of a sudden, we're putting it in July now. I mean, I'd do it sooner if we could, but June would be like the last date, I think we should.
Is that the, like the goal setting, like you do?
Yeah, they do the goal setting, they get the goal settings.
We've got May and June coming up.
Yeah, why?
So when we do our board evaluation, we, we discuss, right? So at that point, when we were doing, we're focused on our goals, it could be that at that point, we decide or make a proposal for next year's goals.
And we could have some kicked around, so everybody can come prepared, and we could maybe put something together. And we just talked about succinct, kind of narrow, crisp goals too, so we don't need 30 goals, right?
We need to also, I guess, you know, maybe we can talk in, I'm not sure, the personal government, me, to Ken, about that behind the scenes, about his schedule too, and how that might fit in or not fit in.
Yeah.
As well.
What was it playing last year? Last year was creepy.
Last year was. I assumed it was this year coming.
However, the new rep would be, but you would get an hour's worth of, towards the Carol Lee Larson.
Yeah. That's always helpful.
Yes, well, let's say we did it. Some, I'm saying, not in general, I'm timing in general, if you did it with their calendar, like they. Not only get the goals done, you have, you have.
We should do it, I think.
Yeah, so, so we have, so after, you know, I had two things to bring up, I've asked for others. First of the other things, two things we do, have to do is a board self-evaluation. In order, in order to get the board that is eminent from New Jersey School Boards on the Mesa. We need to complete a board self-evaluation. So I'm going to go on and open that up, to see if there's anything I can do, but I'm going to do it very quickly, like, let's say by Friday or Saturday latest, and, and I guess, I'm not even sure, I've never seen this new system they have. But if you all wouldn't mind just going on there, and, you know, between, I, we don't have to, we won't be discussing it before May 7th, because you have, you know, we have a budget hearing, we won't discuss it until the May meeting. But we just need to complete it before the May. Yeah, before the base, before May 7th.
Because that's, that's, we get recognized, we have.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, maybe by May 5th, so Charlene can go in and verify that we all completed this.
She'll be.
She won't be.
She'll be here, no problem.
May 1st. Isn't it? Oh, she's going back for the recognition.
So that was checking.
Yeah, I assume she knows she's coming back for the recognition, but I just don't think she knows how she's being recognized.
So there's, uh, we're being, oh, like, awarded, but is, that's not the Carol Lee Larson one?
Yeah, you have to get the award recertification, and then you need more on top of that for the Carol Lee.
So, yes, once we get this certification, we are working towards Carol Larson, towards another 16th, or a number past that.
Yeah, it's another.
But John has a good point, if we bring school boards back, where we could, for the process, we can get some more.
Yeah.
And just get that, and I like what Christine had said, like, you've got, it was pendulum, we had six goals this year, maybe two next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've done really well, to your point, you know, great, sorry. Yeah. Great. We've got the pendulum, it's swinging the other way, and I think we already did four of the six, and we've done. Maybe we just narrow it.
Just narrow.
So, yeah, so we have the, the board self-evaluation that we have to do, hope, you know, if you don't mind, you know, help, help us out, you know, at least the majority of you, but hopefully all of you, you know, within the next two weeks after that.
We all have to do it.
Yeah, we, to get, you know, to get that completed, at least an input into the system, well enough for whoever's checking to make sure we did it.
Do you get a report?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Complete, Barry, like, well, do you know, like, oh, these people have it or whatever?
There are lists.
And when's the superintendent evaluation, was that the next one?
Uh, yes, and then the other thing that's coming up is we talked, we, I think in our governance committee, we are, for governance, I believe. We're talking about, it'll be, Mr. Tini's first round of the superintendent evaluation. You know, as in a lot of the processes, you know, I guess the system opens up, the district goals are placed into the system. And then the board, you know, evaluates, you know, and I think there's a, this is all generically speaking. I think that did partially matter, didn't mean, is like the three categories you choose from in a superintendent evaluation on the district goals. First, the superintendent, you know, puts their, what they think, did they mean it, partially mean it or not mean it at all? You, and then the board goes in and there's like support put behind that, like, you know, what, what was done to accomplish those goals during the year, you know, or evidence, you know, to support whatever conclusion was there. And then either win and agree or disagree with that, what you think was in that partially mattered or not mattered at all. Then there's a whole, several pages of just generic information about, you know, superintendent evaluation, you know, different categories that you all rank, you know. And also put comments in. So, you know, we talked about how, by waiting until June, it becomes interesting in June because there is a lot of stuff going on in June, graduations, year end stuff and all that. So we want to try to, you know, try our best to get done a little bit earlier than the June meeting. So that, you know, we, you know, and could get, you know, get his piece done and we can get our piece done, and then we still have breathing room as a board to get the results. And then we're supposed to come up with a summary, and then we're supposed to prove the summary and then discuss it with the superintendent. And oftentimes, we have all the results, we, we, we always do it in June, like the whole thing, we got the whole thing out there. You know, all of the comments, all the rankings, and then in the past, the board president takes their best guess on summarizing it and, and seeing if this, you know, the summary comments are, you know, to the board's liking. And then they can be tweaked, but they have to be completed that night and discussed that night. So whatever happens that night, it could be, you know, you know, if there's tweaks and changes made, it's, you know, very unprofessional, it's actually. It's handwritten and whatever, so we're thinking of trying to get it done by May, but things coming quick.
I understand what we're going to have.
May, things coming really quick. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll discuss the timeline, but, but keep your eyes open for that, you know, eventually too, you know. When it comes out, please try to, you know, do that.
So the self-evaluation.
That's going to come. Yeah, because.
Isn't that if it's a May, like, kept it, kept it, like, May 7th, you gotta get that done by.
Yeah.
Because the meeting is when?
May 7th.
A few days before at least.
Yeah, I mean.
You don't want to do it right on the.
Yeah.
That'd be a bad look, but that's your goals because you have recognition.
Yeah, May, May 5th would be nice if they have at least a date.
So we're going to get that one done.
The ink has to be dry.
And then after that, we do.
Yes, and that will be the works in, you know, in the.
But while we're doing, according to the school board's twelve month calendar, which is what we were referring to in governance, while we're working on our board self-evaluation, Ken can be doing his portion.
Absolutely.
And it's supposed to be, we were, I think we agreed to like early April or April 1st. And then in April, we conference on it, we do our part.
You're ready.
May.
May.
We're in April.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, we're already a month.
I have it on the calendar.
So guys, I'm just getting back to the board self about, yeah.
Yes.
Can we all commit to completing it by Sunday night, May 4th? So that when they come in on.
By the morning, yes.
They see it.
It's there. And give them two days.
Yes.
And then we're done.
Yeah, and then they're maybe able to discuss it in our meeting, but at least that'll be done, they can see it's done.
And then they give us all the weekend to.
Do you reckon they're going to use that to.
Yes, and then, and while we're doing that, we could, you know, that would be something, if, if, if we choose to begin setting those goals, you, you know, use that as your, your, your screen board into.
I have an idea.
But wasn't one of your goals to complete that certification?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could, then we could check around. But I, you know, I do, I just want to have the goals set soon. Forward in district if we could, and then that way, you know, it kind of clears the runway for, you know.
I think it's a good best practice. Push them up early in our areas.
That was board goal number four.
Like the, the school board, board certification.
Yeah, there you go.
Number three.
How long does a certification last?
You have to maintain it, you have to maintain credits.
Maintain the credits.
To keep it.
But going along to the Carol Lee Larson.
Yeah, to keep the certification at that level, you have to.
That was a number after, yeah, but then only lasts a month.
Yeah, we were the first, one of the first.
We were one of the first five?
People that lacked us, you know.
So now, will we be the first to get it twice? We, we have to find out if we'll be the first one to get it twice.
Yes.
Hopefully they'll, yeah.
You did.
But I think, yeah, once you get it, as long as you keep doing credits, you maintain that level or status. Yeah, that was like the year when COVID was hitting, it was a lot of stuff.
There's a lot of other stuff going on.
That'd be good to get it back, I say, now I'm going.
Oh, absolutely.
The training.
I mean, that, that's like.
We need to prepare each year to keep it on going.
Four, four, at least four things a year.
Why don't I do this, why don't I tomorrow email Charlene?
Yeah.
Tell her where we, ask her where we are and how, you know, how to maintain it, roll call.
Yeah, and.
Just like a, get a.
She.
Carol Lee Larson, that's the next one.
The next one.
Yep, absolutely.
And how well ours current one.
She says it's like twelve credits and we have to do what, four a year?
I think that's the average.
It was like three or four a year, it wasn't a lot, it wasn't a big, yes, you just have to do it.
Yeah. Achieve it and then meet it.
Yeah. Can you just be that board new person to be as well?
Yeah, just going to ask if you know. Is it Kelly?
I don't know, I was going to ask her, but.
I know they advertised for a position, so they may still have some open.
Couldn't have been her, the person she was with her.
All right, maybe you have some time.
I know, they're probably going to share. They're probably going to share, Kelly.
What's going on? Yeah, so where are we, so, did we cover?
That was part of new business, wasn't it?
That was all, that was all new business, you have three things. Boarding the circles, board self-evaluation, superintendent evaluation. Sorry, the other new business that come before the board? If not, I believe we do have a closed session to do, and what was it, the category? Student matters, okay.
Some summary negotiations, did that?
No, you can do that.
Closed session, we can do that too, yes, thank you.
So you want, you want student matters, negotiations, and then I can do a quick update on residents.
So we have three things, okay. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss issues of board confidentiality as permitted in the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, which was nineteen seventy-five. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reconvenes, they will be made public when the confidentiality of the subject is fully warranted. We are going to, we're going to discuss negotiations with Boot Township Education Association, students' matters and student residency. And there'll be no board action taken when we reconvene. And they have that motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thank you. It is nine fifty-six PM, we've just returned from our, our closed session, there is no other board action, they have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming and we'll see you next month.